Good evening. First, let me begin by apologizing for making you folks wait. That was not our intent, but we had some matters that needed to be discussed in the executive session. So, on behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to apologize for being late. Would you please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first order of business tonight is to approve or amend the agenda. We have a last-minute addition to the agenda. We have a settlement that we will need to approve tonight, so I'd like to have a motion to amend the agenda to include a potential settlement offer. Pam, Tim is the second. Any discussion? All in favor of amending the agenda? Thank you. Public comments. At this time, we have an opportunity for the public to speak to the board. We would ask that you come up and use the microphone. We would remind you that this is a meeting held in public, and it's not a public meeting, and we would ask that a certain level of civility be maintained in your comments. Do we have any public comments tonight? Sorry to like before the wedding vows, your last opportunity to speak. Thank you. Student representative report. Our student representative tonight is Angelina Champagne. She's a junior class officer. She's also a facilitator for the 40 Developments Asset Training Program. And for those of you who may not be familiar with that program, that's a program that focuses on 40 characteristics that help students be successful, not only in school, but in life. She's also a participant in select chorus in the show choir. She will be reprising the role of Ms. Andrews in high school production of Mary Poppins in March. She participates in Gemini and IB classes, and she has currently a cumulative average of 95.7. Well done. Welcome.
Thank you for having me. Um, is this thing on? Can I talk now? It's not good. Okay, well, thank you for having me. I'm Angie Champagne, and I didn't know my average was that high, so you saved me a trip to Power School.
We have a couple points for you.
Oh, yeah. I appreciate that. Don't want to make me look bad. Um, well, everyone is back from break. It's been a crazy week getting back in the swing of things, but everyone is doing great. Um, the winter sports are in full swing. Everyone's been doing basketball and wrestling and bowling. It's been fantastic. We have great things skiing, wonderful. And also, musical practices for Mary Poppins are also doing fantastic. By the way, that is March 20th through the 22nd, so mark your calendars. Be there, or be square. Tickets will be in the main office. And show choir also is presenting cabaret on Friday, January 16th at 7:00. It is Emily Crissell's Senior Project, so you can also support her students. And also, midterms are a few weeks away, so we are studying hard, getting ready for those midterms. It's fantastic studying, great. And that's all I had. So, um, thank you for having me again. I hope you all had a wonderful Christmas. Happy New Year. Just thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, and we hope you had a good holiday as well.
I did.
We'll check back on that average after midterms. At this time, do we have any board member comments or ladies' lawn reports?
Well, I went to alumni night for wrestling. I hadn't been in a couple years, and it was nice to see. We had, I believe, 40-something wrestling alumni. For those of you who aren't familiar with that, it's the one night that the wrestler, the current wrestling varsity club invites back former wrestlers from way back to just last year, if you had graduated, and they had over 40 come. We won the meet, and I don't know that much about wrestling, but I learned a few things, and it was very nice to see a really well-attended meet.
Any other board member comments? Jeremy?
Um, the Ontario PTO is having a meeting next Tuesday at 6:30 in the OE cafeteria, and Mr. Carl Luvati will be giving some information to the parents, and I believe everybody's welcome to that.
Thank you, Jeremy. Any other comments?
Ron, I'd like to thank the middle school for that preview performance of Shrek. I don't know if that's a national secret, that we were given a little sneak peek today of the upcoming play, but it was fantastic, and thanks to the staff and to the district office for putting that together for the board. It was great. I'm always impressed at the nerve of the young students to get up there on stage and sing and dance. I do it in a shower, and that's about it. So, I was impressed, and it was really, it was great. So, thanks to the staff for making that happen.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, let's turn to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. This evening, we have three superintendent reports. We're going to, I've got a couple of staff recognition, or student recognitions that we want to share with you. Rob Banzer is going to talk to us a little bit about the Affordable Care Act. That's going to need an action, and that's part of the Obama healthcare conversation. Then, we're going to have a conversation on digital signs. I think Dennis had an interest in that and was supported by the rest of the board. The signage will be for schools to advertise and to communicate with the public. So, let's get started on that. First of all, I'm happy to share that Shai McLeod was featured in the Democrat Chronicle for her outstanding determination and hustle playing defense for Wayne's Girl Basketball Team. Shai was named tournament MVP last year in All-Greader Rochester. Tomorrow night, she is expected to go over 1,000 career points on the basketball court when the Eagles play Waterloo. She has 311 career steals and has added, again this winter, averaging six steals per game to go with her average of 17 points. Just another little side note, she was set to play last night. Unfortunately, Waterloo canceled after school activities because of the weather, so we're excited to get that opportunity to see Shai tomorrow night. It's here. Yep. That's a good question. It is going to be right here on our campus. Another quick recognition, Wayne Central High School staff, the staff collected over $4,000 to donate to the Food Link throughout the month of December, so congratulations and thank you to those staff members. Okay, at this time, I'm going to ask Bob, I'm sorry, Rob, to share a little bit about the Affordable Care Act.
Good evening. I just wanted to take a few minutes to put in context the resolution that's in front of you tonight regarding the Affordable Care Act. As you know, or as a quick reminder, the Affordable Care Act was passed back in 2010, and there are a number of implications for the district. The first test is whether or not we were large enough to be impacted by the Affordable Care Act, and because we have 50 or more employees, we certainly are. So, there are a few things that we need to do. We need to identify as we go through determining what this means for Wayne Central. So, the first thing that we need to do is we need to identify our full-time employees, and full-time employees for the sake of the Affordable Care Act is anybody working 30 or more hours per week on average, and that's an important distinction. When this initially came out, the threshold was 95% of all employees. 95% of the employees who were full-time had to have healthcare coverage. Because of the first year of the rollout, there were some modifications made, and that was dropped to 70% for 2015, but in 2016, it will go to 95%. The second thing that we need to do is to determine our measurement stability and administrative periods, and that's why we're here tonight, to talk about that. So, if we talk about what we're looking to do, we're really looking to establish our measurement stability and administrative periods that align with our open enrollment period. So, I just want to go through a couple of key terms here in term, you know, that relate to this. The first is the measurement period, and that's our look-back period. And we have chosen to look back an entire year. If you remember, the whole full-time equivalency is an average of 30 hours per week, so that allows us our largest look-back period and our largest denominator, if you will. The second piece is the stability period. So, whatever the measurement period is, however long that measurement period is, the stability period is the amount of time that you have to give coverage to your employers. And then, the administrative period is essentially, if you think about it, is the open enrollment period. And so, on the advice of Smola Consulting, who our consortium, the Finger Lakes area health consortium uses, they use Smola, they recommended that we use timelines that we're already accustomed to. So, our open enrollment period starts in May, so our year look-back begins at that time. So, there are many more implications for this. We have to make sure that our plans meet certain essential coverage requirements, and every plan that we have in our consortium meets that requirement. We also have to deal with an affordability threshold. So, we have to make sure that all the plans that we offer are affordable. And we're talking about a single-base plan, so it's coverage for a single person, and it can't be anything more than 9.5% of the employee's total income. Now, there were a lot of questions about that, how employers would then go and find out how much income somebody makes, and so they've allowed for some different scenarios in terms of how we can determine that. One is straight to look at their income from this district, but whatever we do, we have to apply evenly across the board. We actually are going to be talking to some consultants tomorrow because, you know, a lot of this is, it gets tricky, it gets complicated, and we want to make sure that we're hitting it just right. Because, as you see in the next bullet, there are penalties if certain criteria aren't met, and so we just want to make sure that we're doing whatever we can to mitigate those penalties. Because, again, if you have insurance plans that aren't affordable, there's a penalty. If you have, if you don't meet the percentage coverage requirements, there can be a penalty. And then, there are some penalties down the road. They call it the Cadillac tax, which is not to start till 2018, which has to do with the richness of the plans that are offered. So, there's a lot of moving parts to this, and so we're taking a very careful look at it. We need to inform our employees, so as this thing evolves, we will essentially be issuing a W-2 to our employees about their health insurance. Obviously, there is pretty stringent reporting requirements to the IRS, and those things are still, we have a pretty good sense of what they're going to be, but they're still, some of the details are still being worked out. And, you know, the next one to stay current with the changes, I just read something before we came in. The Washington Times tonight reported that the Republican, I'm sorry, the House of Representatives voted to increase the work week, full-time equivalency, from 30 hours to 40 hours. So, now, it's passed one chamber of Congress, and we'll see, we'll see what happens with that. So, even as we're working on the rules, we understand, you know, the political nature of this, and we understand that those things, this is going to continue to evolve. So, in summary, tonight, what we're asking you to do is just to approve the resolution that allows us to establish the measurement, the stability, and the administrative periods for the district. Any questions?
Rob?
9.5%? Yes.
Is that what the policy would be total, or what the person would have to pay?
Is it affordable to the person?
Somebody makes $100,000, 9% would be $9,000, right? Or $10,000?
Yes. But remember, it's a single-base plan. It's for single coverage.
So, that is, if they had to pay all the employees, their players, who need help?
Yes. Yes. Exactly. No, for a lot of this, you know, for a lot of it, it's straightforward, but when you begin talking about substitute teachers, and when you begin to talk about coaches and part-time people, and making sure, you know, kind of tracking those hours, because you want to make sure that we're meeting the thresholds and also establishing baselines for those positions that we never had to think of in those terms before. So, you know, your teachers, your full-time employees, that's the simple piece. Yes, so there is actually a waiver form, again, as another layer to say, you know, look, we're all set here. We have insurance. Here's some information about our insurance. So, yes, we're tracking that as well.
I'm sorry, but the 9.3%, is that just premiums, or does that include whatever the out-of-pocket expenses are?
No, it's the cost of the plan, not any expenses. And again, that's for a single-base plan.
Propulsion probably, so it's all done on a stipend, and it doesn't accept the power of the state.
It's not, but again, we have to, the way the law is written, we want to be cautious, and the way that we're being told to interpret it is, you know, come up with a baseline for the number of hours. Now, remember, if somebody teaches, coaches one season, our average is the entire year. So, they may, you know, there may be a lot of hours in a short amount of time, but the formula that we're using, the look-back period, is a whole year. So, it's an average of the entire year. Right. Yes. It's, yes, it's full-time employees that, we have to make sure in 2015 that 70% of our full-time employees who meet the threshold of 30 hours per week have health insurance. That piece, honestly, as right now, I'm not too worried about that, but then it goes to 95, but then it's making sure that we're covering coaches and any part-time people, and, you know, that we're not, you know, we're making sure that we've accounted for everybody.
But if people opt out, could the district get penalized for that if we don't hit that 95% threshold? I mean, how does?
If they, it depends on why they opt out. So, if they have health insurance somewhere else, you know, with their spouse or their dependent, then the wave, we have a waiver form, then that covers us.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Rob? If not, could I get a motion to approve the resolution for the Affordable Care? Karen, a second. Pam, any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a discussion about digital signage for schools, and I guess I would preface the discussion by saying, as a former principal of this building, I remember how hard it was to ask my custodians to go out and do something with a signboard out front when the wind was blowing like it was the last three days, and we had snow on the ground and all the other things. And then, as a grandparent, I've been going to a number of schools, and I have begun to see what some of the other schools have. I was down to Seneca Falls Reminders Academy last spring at a lacrosse game, and on their crossfield, they had a signboard, an electronic signboard, that allowed them not only to put in music and all sorts of displays, but they could also put pictures of the players on the signboard. And then, I was at Baldwinsville for a lacrosse tournament, and as I was leaving the school, it was around graduation time, on their signboard out front, scrolling through their signboard, they had a digital display signboard, they were showing a picture of every graduate of the class of 2014 and what the future plans of that graduate would be underneath it. So, that's some of the technology that's out there, and I'll turn it now to the rest of the board to talk about whether or not we would like to direct our administration to look into digital signage.
Yeah. Before you go there, Ron, I would also like to add to the board that, from the district perspective, we certainly have an interest of moving forward with something like that, so I'm just going to lay that right on the table for you. And also, because we think it's consistent with board goal and expectations from around communication that we talked about earlier in the year. So, just wanted to at least let you know what we're thinking.
I'm all for it. I've actually handed Greg a bunch of stuff on the new boards. I think we need to be careful on what we do. It can get really, really expensive when you start getting into these ones that look like TV. It's actually, you can get into hundreds of thousands of dollars. The quotes that I've gotten are anywhere from $20,000 to $22,000 per board. It's LED boards. They're made, very well-made. Dorshil has one up on theirs for 20 years, these same boards, and have never, have they never been worked on? Yes, they have, but very, very little maintenance. I think when we go forward looking at this, we look at buying a quality board, not some cheap thing that we're going to be breaking down all the time. Something that's been tried and tested and true. And I would also like to suggest that we use a local vendor like SLS. Keep the money in our own community. They're spending it here, so I think it's really important that we have the opportunity to do that. Many times, we don't have that opportunity, so I say let's take advantage of that.
Rather than get into the specifics of the boards, let's try to limit our discussion about whether or not we would like to direct the administration to pursue the idea.
It is. It's putting it in our, the cabinets we have there.
Okay, all right.
Basically.
I think in addition to, you know, providing communication quickly, because you can change that board whenever you need to, instantly, exactly, it's also for safety, too. I mean, you can put up notices there as soon as you find out about them and make it, people aware that are going by the school, so I think it's a good idea.
My understanding, Carl, is that with today's boards, and Dennis, you may know more than I do, as long as you have power to them, that's all you really need.
Um, the high school and the middle school is fine. Freewill and OP and OE would need power brought out to them. I think that's something our grounds crew could handle. It's not that difficult. It's not like it has to be buried, you know, six foot down.
I think that's a decision we ought to let up to the administration once they check into it and come back to us with a recommendation, if it's our intent as a board to ask them to do that.
I'd like to see us proceed with that, so I don't know if we need a motion or what.
I support it as well.
Yeah, I do as well. I would, as we ask the district to start looking into this, I would reiterate what Dennis said, at least from my perspective on this. I am not interested in going as cheap as we can. I'm not interested in putting an archaic antique out there. If we're going to do it, I'd rather do one and excel at it than do five and put garbage out in front of our buildings. So, although I can appreciate fiscal responsibility, I will also not support a hunk of garbage in front of our buildings. So, keep that in mind as we proceed.
I personally am in favor of it. I think it would be an outstanding tool to promote academics at Wayne Central. I look at the newspapers that come out, and I see where we have 40 or 50 kids who are on the high honor roll. We have, you know, another 40 or 50 who are on the honor roll. We have another 30 or 40 in each grade level who are on the merit roll. It would be so easy to put their names on that signboard out front, to recognize our AP scholars, to recognize the students who take IB and earn an IB diploma, to recognize the people like Shai McLean, who hopefully will score her 1,000th point Friday night. So, I would be in favor of asking the administration to check into the possibility of digital boards and whether it can be done in this year's budget or whether it needs to be left for next year's budget based upon how our budget development goes, so. Any other board member who would like to comment? Do you have enough direction?
We appreciate the direction. I think it's loud and clear, and we can take a hard look at it and, as Ron said, take a look at the best way to finance it. There may be some monies left over from our preservation project. If not, we certainly can roll it into a conversation in our budget process moving forward. As you know, our budget process is a little bit more open and transparent, and we'll definitely, as another option. So, I think we have a couple ways to look at it.
One thing I'd like to say on that is, another thing we could do is, we could do the high school and middle school this year, and then the next year, do free will. Following year, do OE.
You're kind of suggesting a potential phase in, and I'm kind of looking over to Greg, who's someone who will probably help facilitate the research on this. So, there's some logic to that, too, and I think that, you know, the budget would drive that. So, we'll get some options together and take a look at it.
Under board business, a board meeting ago, or two board meetings ago, I forget just which, we had a report about a student field trip to Germany that will occur in 2016. Because it is a trip outside the district, it's an overnight trip, and it's out of the country, we do need a board resolution to approve that trip. So, at this point, could I get a motion to approve the, okay, Phil, a second? Dennis, any discussion about that trip? Any further discussion? Jeremy?
This is, I'm, in light of recent events, I'm all for approving the trip, depending on the state of the world at that time. Recent events from yesterday, and who knows what's going to happen. Us saying, yes, this trip is on, is that a definite? Like, that's not, we can change our mind if chaos ensues someplace at some point.
Yeah, Jeremy, I think that's an excellent suggestion, and because you may approve, you know, the trip for the merit of the trip, health and safety of the students and staff is always paramount, and I can speak to this back in, you know, at 9/11, where as part of a district that had Washington trips on their way, eighth-grade trips on their way to Washington, DC, we very quickly and, you know, very cautiously said, that's not going to happen. So, I do think it's important, I like the caveat, that, you know, approving the trip on merit, but also understanding that the health and safety of our students is, and our staff, parents that support that trip or are on that trip, would be something that I would suggest. As you know, I won't be here for that, but I certainly would make sure whoever is understands the climate at the time, and we wouldn't want to put anybody in harm's way, so I would support that 100%.
I believe, Jeremy, that current board policy allows the superintendent to cancel a trip, a field trip at any moment, so. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor? If not, all in favor? Thank you. The next order of business for the district is a gift to the district. We have a gift to the Mark Gardner Scholarship Fund. Can I get a motion to accept that gift? Tim, a second? Matt, any discussion? All in favor? Kathy, could we ask you to send a thank you note? The next item on discussion is graduation seating for past board members. Jeremy?
It was something that I observed at a graduation for my nieces and nephews in Broad Alvin. They have, it's common practice that any person who sat on their school board at any point could sit to congratulate, or if they have a student graduating, congratulate their student onstage or however we do with the practice. I haven't had the opportunity to go to one of our graduations since I've been on the board, so I don't know. But I do know that we have, in my time on the board, three people who are no longer with us that will have students graduating within the next few years. I don't know what Karen's intention is, and I don't know what my intention is, but I will have students preparing to graduate from here to eternity, it feels like. And just something as a recognition of your time put in. And it's just something I would, thought we should have a discussion about. I don't know how anybody else feels about it.
For those board members who weren't at graduation last year, Debbie Hibbert's son graduated, and of course, she was part of the board at that time. And as the student was presented to the superintendent and the principal and given their diploma, then the student was also able to see the parent at the end of the procession. And it was, it was very nice. It doesn't really interrupt or stop the process or anything. It's just a gesture that was made to current board members. It's always been made to, we've had different administrators over the years who have done it as well when their child comes through. I think it's a nice gesture. It, I don't know the logistics to keep track of all that. So, perhaps what maybe just needs to be is a letter written to the previous board members going back quite a few years, saying, please let us know when your child is of the graduating class, and we could, and if you would like to join the present board onstage when your child graduates, or something simple like that. I don't want it to become a headache for our graduation committee to keep track of. That's my only thing. I think if we send a letter and let them know, they can put it in the back of their head. For you, Alzheimer's might set in at that point, but somebody will remind you, Jeremy. But something along those lines. I mean, what do you think, Karen? You're coming up on that.
Yeah, I have one this year and one in two years, so obviously, I would support it. I also think, yeah, if we send a one-time letter, any board member going forward, do we just put it in the introduction to the board packet, and it's up to them to, you know, keep track of that.
Well, my kids have all come through already, but I got some grandkids coming up. But I'm all for it. I think it's a great idea.
I am, too, and I don't have any kids. But I will say that I think that if you have served on the board, you, I think it's fair to say that as a small token of appreciation, I certainly think that you have, that that's a good thing to allow them to partake in it. I'll just, I'll go one step further. I'm not sure, and maybe this isn't the, maybe, I don't think we get to the nitty-gritty on this right now, but I would say that if I did have children, and if I was or had been a board member and that child was graduating from high school, I don't know that it's asking too much to allow that person to walk up, hand them the diploma, shake their hand, give them a hug, and move on. I don't know what the policy has been in the past. I haven't been part of the district. I haven't had kids go through the district, so I haven't been to a million graduations. I've been to three, mine and two others. I don't like the idea that a board member or that a former board member stands down off of the stage in the grass, out of the, out of the moment, and then their student or their child, sorry, their child comes down after it's pretty much the moment's over, and then you get a little hug. To me, I'm gonna, I'm suggesting that if we do it, that board member or former board member gets to live the moment with their child and gets to hand the diploma to them, and maybe a superintendent would disagree with me. But I think, I think a parent trumps a superintendent at that moment. And I'm suggesting that not only do you have the right to do that, but I further support that the parent gets, or whether you're a parent or grandparent, as long as you're a family member, I think you should have the right to enjoy the moment. So, I don't know, maybe that's too much for right now, but that's my opinion. I never lack speaking it.
We'll put you in touch with the graduation coordinator. I mean, I'm in favor of that, but I know, well, we didn't really have a past precedent for former board members, but I know past precedent for either employees or current board members was not to be in that. Joe, do you have anything? You do it, come on. Jump in here.
We did have a lot of discussion about it in the past, so, and we came to that, we came to that kind of middle ground where, where board members and staff, staff members would be able to kind of greet them outside. I think, before my time, I think there may have been more of what Phil describes.
There was. When Casey graduated, Casey Switzer graduated, I believe Jim gave her her diploma, and I know when I graduated, that we had someone on the board whose daughter was in my class, and that person also handed their daughter. And I don't know what caused it to fall aside, but...
I think there was some discussion about who, who would do that, and does that potentially take away from other experiences slowing down the process? And then, I think we did that for staff members, but we didn't do that for administrators or for other, we did that for board members, but not for staff members. And there might have been some hard feelings around that. I can tell you, for me, I've gone through it twice as it is now, you know, where I greeted Joe and Jen after, after the moment. But I know it was, it was a big discussion back then, so I don't know if that helps.
What I would, what I would ask the board to consider in terms of the conversation, not that parents trump superintendents, which really not, it's not a super, necessarily even a superintendent's call. But again, what I sense and what I hear is a real interest for, for board members and previous board members to be a part of the graduation ceremony. And graduation, in my experience, and Joe's kind of talking to it a little bit, what I was gonna say, is the, is a building-level function. The principal and the students typically, the seniors, the graduation committee typically run their graduation. And I've been in situations where they choose the speakers, and I've been in hot conflict with a speaker that I thought would be a great speaker and have a bunch of seniors come to me and very articulate, articulately say, Mr. Carlavai, that's great for you, but that's not what we want. And so, the question is, who acquiesces in that case? What I hear, I think, is great conversation. One of the things I would just have you consider is that something that, if that's, if that's a collective interest, that you would turn over to the graduation committee and to the current high school principal to say, hey, there's a real interest in this. Can you guys help us out? What does it look like? That's one way of doing it. The other way of doing it is, you could create a policy.
I guess I'm on the right committee then.
So, but again...
Then they'll say, you did it for yourself, Karen.
But so, so I mean, again, I'm just, in terms of giving you some, some direction, typically from my experience, I would say that the buildings take a lot of pride in creating their, their graduation ceremony and who's there and who's a part of it. But that doesn't mean that, you know, they wouldn't entertain that, that conversation. I think if you make it clear, there's a high interest of the board to have a presence and, and what that looks like and what the range is, and they may be able to develop some options and, and, you know, and report back to the board.
John, speaking as, as a parent who's, believe me, this has been on my mind, I, I guess I'm somewhere between where the current situation is and what Phil is talking to, although I think that would be lovely, I, to hand my daughter her diploma. I also understand that we need to keep things moving at graduation, 'cause everybody's sitting and wants to get going, and they're really only interested in the fifteen seconds that their child is walking across the stage. But I do think that there's some middle ground between handing the child the diploma and being, you know, off in the shadows, trying to grab at your child as they're trying to get to their seat. So, and especially, you know, it's, the board is a volunteer position, and there's not a lot of great things that you get for being on the board, like, there's no great things. And I mean, the great things is we get to go see the middle school play and those kinds of things, but, you know, it's not like anybody's, you know, chauffeuring us around. We're not getting three-star meals and large amounts of retirement pay. Normally, normally. They're not catered in by people off the board. And so, I think it's a small thing. It's gonna happen just a few minutes, a couple of times in the life of a board member who's given three years to the district, and it doesn't seem like a big deal.
And again, see, I would support that. I would just encourage you to get the kids involved.
On Phil's note, like, if you go as far as nieces and nephews and family, I got, I have a representative in every grade all the way down. But for me, on this, if we're gonna put it to the high school and the graduation committee, it's something I'd like to see happen quickly, because I know that my board mentor, when I came on the board, he has kids graduating this year. And I would like to afford him that opportunity, if it's something that the graduation committee would like to do.
And I know we talked about this last year, and we missed it with John, too.
Right.
Because his daughter, I believe, graduated last year, and he's part of that. So, if we're gonna do it, we need, we're already in the middle of January, or first week of January, let's, let's move on it, because the graduation committee would have to, you know.
I certainly am happy to meet with Mike, the high school, and share the, the interest. I think it's a great interest, and throughout my career, I've seen board members more in the moment than not, so, and there are several different ways that that can be achieved. Maybe not necessarily handing the diploma. In some cases, I've seen them hand the diploma. In other cases, I've seen them behind, immediately behind the principal, when the principal hands the diploma, and they're right there onstage. And I've seen it where board, where current board members sit onstage, and then, past board members would also have another section where they would be right there throughout the ceremony and come forward. So, there's a lot of ways, you know, kind of going back to Karen said, that, that, you know, that are, maybe that halfway point. Just so you know, I have no, I would have no problem supporting that. I just, again, I think it's an important day for, for seniors, they look forward to it. Principals, you know, take a lot of pride in that, and, and as many ways as you can think of, that's what I've seen over, over the years. But I think it's clear with the charges here, and I'd be more than happy to, you know, get Mike in and say, that's it. Are people familiar with, with the venue change this year?
No.
I know something you don't. It appears we're gonna be going to Theater on the Ridge. And that, that we'll know, we'll know for sure if Greg can firm up the contract. We're looking at it right now. The, the, I'm thinking the day was, is consistent, the ballpark...
Amy said it's on Father's Day, so.
Yeah. Okay, so is that... That's good to know. I'm sure, I don't see that happening, but I appreciate you at least giving the opportunity to, to come up with some thoughts for you.
I believe we have some students in the audience who may have to have papers signed. We are interested in making sure that you have time to go home and do your homework. So, if you bring your papers up here, we'll sign them and get you out of here. The next item on agenda for discussion is the appointment of a deputy internal claims auditor. Matt, can I turn it over to you to start the discussion?
Sure. The audit committee is recommending the creation of a position of deputy claims auditor. The position, job description will be the same as the claims auditor, and we report directly to the Board of Education or the audit committee. And we recommend that the job be paid on a per diem basis at a rate of eighty dollars per warrant reviewed. The justification for this is that our claims auditor is retired, and that personal travel may delay claims review. And also, we believe that the current auditor is doing a good job, and that his experience will be very beneficial to training a deputy claims auditor. We would also expect that the deputy would be the next claims auditor in the event the current claims auditor could not fulfill his duties. I've also been in contact with the Office of State Comptroller with regard to this position, and they're the ones that provided the deputy claims auditor title. We have a vacant position in our listing of jobs of assistant claims auditor, which is not currently a legal position, and it is unfilled.
Questions or discussions for Matt?
Is the idea to change the title and then post it?
Yes, pretty much, and then set out the, the rate. You know, it'd be different. It wouldn't be a stipend, it would be a per, per diem.
If you remember the Controller's Report, basically, the claims auditor cannot be anybody who's employed by the district in almost any other capacity. So, by having somebody who's not on, on site every day, we are putting ourselves in a position where sometimes claims could not get audited in a timely fashion. But so, by having a deputy internal claims auditor, we would prevent that from occurring.
Does adding this position address any of the issues raised in our last audit?
No, those have already been, been fixed, because Russ retired. So, he's no longer an employee, he's no longer got any purchase function whatsoever. And then, when he did make a purchase or he was involved in a purchase, it was usually given to the audit committee to review his, his part of it, you know, so he wasn't approving his own payments.
That, that comment from the Controller's Report, one week, separated his separation from the district, so they wouldn't even footnote that one.
Is there any other discussion? Is it the intent of the board to ask that the position be changed and go ahead and post it?
I would also like to add that the audit committee would be the ones that would like to do the interview hire or whatever on that.
Next item on, on the agenda...
Next item on, on, uh, the agenda is, uh, information, uh, first reading of policy seven forty, uh, ten and draft naming policy. Karen?
So let me first do seventy-four-ten. Uh, there was very little change to this. Uh, this was a policy regarding attendance of extracurricular activities by students. And the only two changes to it were removed a calculation of what a half a school day was because it changes building to building, uh, what, what time the school day starts and ends. And we added a statement about a best effort to identify students in violation of the policy to recognize the difficulty of, not that the students wouldn't be identified as far as, you know, who was making the grades or at school or tru, or truant or whatever, but that if I'm standing at the door of the gym of a basketball game, I don't necessarily know every student in the district. And if somebody walks in and I don't recognize, I don't know who they are, I can't say, "Oh, you're not supposed to be here." So it's that it would be done on a best effort basis. If somebody on the staff sees somebody that they know to be in violation of the policy, of course, they'll do something, but they can't help who they don't know. Uh, the other one was the draft naming policy, which I'm going to read, but was in the packet that went out. And then I'm gonna make some comments at the end because we already identified some changes that are required. The new one is currently says, "From this point forward, there will be an area or areas set aside in one or more school buildings to recognize persons who have made significant contributions to the Wayne Central School District. However, facilities at Wayne Central School District will not be named for individuals or organizations. The nominations will be reviewed annually, at which time past honorees will be discussed as necessary for continued inclusion. A committee consisting of at least one board member, one administrator, one faculty member, the superintendent, and one parent representative will review the nominations." We sent this out for first reading and some of the comments that have come back so far where it was unclear whether this committee was per building or per di, per district and the intent was to be one committee for the district. There was also a question about, um, would it be the same committee that reviewed new nominations and any ones that needed to be reviewed for continued inclusion? And it was the intent, again, that it be the same committee. Now, some of you may ask, why is this their state, this statement in there about renewed or continued inclusion? Because in other districts, there have been problems where recognition of some individuals have been put up where it was found out later that it may not have been appropriate because of behavior on the individual's part. And there was no way for the, it to be changed. There was no policy. So we put that in there in the very unlikely event that something like that would happen here. Um, the other reason that we went this route is because we wanna offer the opportunity to recognize individuals. We have a lot of people in this community that have made wonderful contributions to our district through supporting our students and the activities that these students are involved in, supporting the district itself. And we wanna make sure that we offer an opportunity to recognize those individuals in a way that is fair to all the people that we need to recognize and, uh, allows us equal opportunity to recognize all the people that are, uh, deserving of that recognition. And we felt that this was the most fair and equitable way to do that. So again, I, there will be some changes in this, so it'll be submitted again for a first reading with these changes in it. But I, I know it's been on top of mind for a lot of people, so we've been working through this. So just wanted to give a rundown on it.
Any questions for Karen?
No, Ron, but i- if I could, could I make a couple more comments on this, Karen? Um, I, I, I think a couple other points that had been brought up were, what about facilities that are already named? And, uh, specifically, that is why this starts with, "From this point forward, we aren't undoing anything from the past. We are drawing a line in the sand and progressing." And the other, uh, question that had come up was the, pretty much the definition of facilities. And we kept the word facilities very specific. We use the word facilities very specific because it covers virtually everything we could think of, whether it was a, a building, a soccer field, a football field, you, you know, the, the list goes on. It, it really seems to be all-inclusive. You can't name a hallway after someone. It's a, it's, a facility covers a very broad scope. It covers everything. I just wanted to touch on that as well.
Let me add for the board's information. I, I reached out, the last, the last naming of, of anything in this district was when, to the best of my knowledge, was when the soccer field was named after Bernie Pori. I reached out to Lyle Pori, Bernie's son, and Lyle was gracious enough to, to share with me one of his father's scrapbooks. And so I was able to, to leaf through his scrapbook. The soccer field was named after Bernie in nineteen eighty-five. The sign, uh, identifying, uh, the field as Bernie Pori Field was added in nineteen eighty-six. I asked Kathy to go through, uh, and, and in his scrapbook, there's a, a, a little page that says that the Board of Education is pleased to announce, uh, the soccer field will be known as Bernie Pori Field. So I asked Kathy to go through the board minutes for nineteen eighty-five and nineteen eighty-six. Guess what? She spent two hours and found nothing. Well, first, part of that is because the first time I gave her the wrong date, I was told it was in nineteen ninety-one. That's due to my son's misinformation, uh, which I've discussed with him. But, uh, but, but, um, apparently it was done by the Board of Education, but was never approved by, through board action. There's nothing in the board minutes. So I, I just add that for your information, so you, you're aware of that. Is, are there any other questions or comments for, uh?
Actually, you just reminded me of one other clarification when we were discussing this in our meeting today, is that the intent of this policy as it stands today is that this committee would approve anything that went up in the buildings. It would not come to the board. There would be a board member and a superintendent on the committee, but it would be approved by that committee.
Anything else?
Karen, was there any, just not that that's part of policy, it's more of procedure, and I'm sure that with the committee, but did you kind of like throw around like basic ideas or are you leaving that right up to the committee to do?
I'm sorry, ideas for which aspect?
For recognition.
We're leaving that up to the buildings because I think it will depend on what is being rec- I mean, for instance, you know, do, do they wanna put, you know, some by the pack and some by the gym, depending on whether it's athletics or theater and music? Or do they just want one hallway where it all is? Like we have the hallway where all the academic awards and recognition are in the high school? That's, that's really up to-
The committee.
The committee.
Okay.
Or the built, you know, the, the buildings, it's not part of the policy.
Okay.
Anything else? If not, then let's turn to, uh, the second reading of policies fifteen-eleven, thirty-two-thirty, forty-two-forty, forty-three-twenty, and eighty-two-seventy-one. Can I get a motion to approve these policies? Dennis, a second. Pam, any discussion on these policies? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Uh, next is a resolution approving the CSEA contract. Uh, basically, um, some of the highlights of this contract. It's a three-year contract. It's for the years two thousand fourteen, fifteen, fifteen and sixteen, sixteen and seventeen. In the first year, it would be a two-point-seven raise, uh, retroactive to July the first. In the second year, it would be a two-point-nine percent increase. And in the third year of the contract, it will be a fifty-two cent per hour increase. In health insurance, there will be no change in the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year. Two thousand fifteen to two thousand and seventeen, employees hired before two thousand and five will contribute eleven-point-five percent, uh, to the same base plan Blue Cross Two with a twenty-dollar deductible and thirteen percent in two thousand and sixteen. That is a change from the existing contract. Employees hired between two thousand and five and two thousand and twelve and who have met the ten-year anniversary will contribute eleven-point-five percent in two thousand and fifteen to the same base plan Blue Cross Blue Shield Two, twenty-dollar deductible, and thirteen percent in two thousand and sixteen. Employees hired after two thousand and twelve will continue to pay twenty percent of the base plan. Employees hired after ratification will contribute, ratification of the contract, which would be tonight, will contribute twenty percent to the new base plan, which will be a healthy blue, twenty-five-dollar copay. For retiree health benefits, uh, for fifteen years of continuous service, there'll be no change. The district will pay thirty percent of the healthcare costs. For twenty years, it will change from fifty percent to sixty percent of the single base plan. And after thirty years, the district would pay seventy-five percent of the single base plan. Changes in transportation. The trip wa, trip rate will change from twelve dollars and sixty cents an hour to fourteen dollars upon ratification. And the meeting rate will change from nine dollars and sixty cents to fourteen dollars upon ratification. May I get a motion to approve the CSEA, or to ratify the CSEA contract? Carla, Phil, second. Discussion or questions? No discussions, no questions? If not, all in favor, please signify. Any opposed? Abstentions? Dennis, Matt? Thank you. We, uh, amended our, uh, agenda tonight to approve a settlement resolution. I'm going to read a resolution approving a settlement. Whereas the Board of Education has received a proposed settlement agreement regarding a proceeding and appeal initiated pursuant to the Individuals with Disability Education Act and has given due deliberations thereto. And whereas the Board of Education prefers to settle the claim without the increased expense and financial exposure of continued lit, litigation, now therefore be it resolved that the proposed settlement agreement is hereby approved and the Superintendent of Schools is authorized and directed to execute the same on behalf of the district and to take all steps necessary to carry out the terms of such agreement. Could I get a motion to approve that settlement? Dennis, a second. Phil, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Next, uh, we have the consent agenda. Turn it over to our superintendent.
Once again, con, consent agenda items are items that have been, um, worked through, uh, the district and, and also, um, presented to the board. They're typically items that we, um, are routine in nature and don't warrant much discussion.
Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Pam, a second. Matt, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Committee reports. Communications. Jeremy?
Um, Communications Committee met tonight. Our next roundtable for the community is next Thursday, the fifteenth, from seven to eight in the middle school library. Um, we're going to be sharing ideas about the budgeting priorities from the recent, um, budget survey we had out to the public. And we're gonna be sharing, um, uh, the data that we collected through that survey. That'll be, again, next Thursday, seven to eight in the middle school library. Um, and then our next committee meeting will be February fifth in the District Office Conference Room at five o'clock.
Audit Committee, Matt?
Okay, there's no further report from last month or our last meeting. Uh, let's see, uh, the, we had one scheduled, a meeting scheduled for next week on the fifteenth. Uh, however, uh, we are canceling that meeting due to a lack of urgent business and missing members. Uh, so our next meeting will be the next one scheduled in February. And where it will be held, I don't know, but I'll let you know at the next meeting.
Okay. Policy Committee, Karen?
We met today and our next meeting will be on February fifth from four to five in the District Office Conference Room. Our agenda at that meeting currently resides with, uh, reviewing the December BOSI's packet of new policies that was sent out recently and to discuss whether we need a policy regarding recording conversations in the school. Um, I believe we may also have a couple of policies that the Audit Committee would like us to look at that we may be reviewing at that time.
Okay. Under Board President comments, I have just two, two comments. First, on behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to extend, uh, condolences to the family of, uh, Jen Prentis. She is a teacher in the middle school. It's my understanding that her mother passed away two days before Christmas. So on behalf of the Board, we would like to extend condolences to her family. The second comment has to deal with, um, um, the selection process for the new superintendent. Uh, for those of you who are in the audience, if you have not filled out the surveys regarding, uh, the qualities you'd like to see in a superintendent, we would certainly encourage you to do so. Uh, as a board, uh, we are very much interested in, in, um, hearing, uh, our community speak on, on the qualities they would like to see in, in our next superintendent. And, um, lastly, I would just like to say that, um, Carla talked about the, uh, the alumni night at, at wrestling. I was, I happened to be there that, that night. It was one of the largest turnouts I've seen in a long, long time. I believe right now our wrestling team is ranked third in the Rochester area in small schools and that we are state-ranked as well. We are somewhere in the top twenty, but I forget the exact, uh, um, location of, of where we are. So, um, that's all I have for tonight. Can I get a motion for adjournment? Jeremy and Matt, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, folks. Safe travels. Stay warm.